Would you like to call the meeting to order? You can say the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patrick, thank you for coming. We have no written communication. Do we have any board committees that have met since the last meeting?
Not a board committee, but I attended the virtual ECASU legislative breakfast
Great.
last Saturday. Really nothing exciting for us. It was the three new legislators that were elected, which are our district folks. But John Rivera is the New York State Assembly 149th District, west side of Oakville-Hamper, Orchard Park, Long Island. Bill Conrad was on there, 140th District, which is Sweet Home Kenmore, Tarland Hills. And Sean Ryan's representative was there. He was Assembly, now Senate, 60th, which is Kenmore, Grand Island, Hamper, Orchard Park. They brought up some good topics, talked about access to the Internet and policy priorities, testing for cause finding issues, to try and get that on board. But the intent really was for the new legislators. So it was next Saturday morning.
When do they serve for breakfast?
What do you serve?
I know. Every coffee.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we can go to the superintendent's report.
So I wanted to provide you with a little background information on the state's microcluster action initiative as it relates to our responsibilities in school and our current designation as a yellow zone according to this initiative. So on November 9th, the governor placed most of Erie County into a yellow zone. As you know, there's three zones: red, orange, and yellow. There's a nice chart that details what that means for everybody. I'm focusing mostly on what it means for us here at the school district. So the designation of a yellow zone was initiated because our seven-day rolling average was above a positivity rate of 2.5% for 10 days, and we had 10 or more new cases per 100,000 residents on a seven-day average. So the intent of the microcluster initiative, from what I was told or read, was to, as opposed to shutting down an entire state or an entire region of the state, was to focus on hotspots. And their goal was to look at data by zip code and then even at a more granular level, by neighborhood or by clusters. So unfortunately for Erie County, the data was so widespread that when the designation came, most of the county, except for some of the outskirts on the east and south side, fell into the zone. So in the yellow zone, as of the guidance that we had from October 9th, schools could reopen if we randomly tested, or stay open, if we randomly tested on a weekly basis 20% of our in-person students, teachers, and staff at least once a week. So that was as of 11/9. But as you'll see, when I come back to that, it has changed since then. For the orange or red zone, which some people anticipate, there may be some designations in Erie County coming up this week, there's the same criteria, a seven-day rolling average, but it's above 3% for 10 days, or 10 or more newly daily cases of 100,000 residents. I did see the press conference today from the county executive where he mentioned that Erie County has been over 3%, and I thought he said, in many cases, over 5% on a seven-day rolling average. So then for the red zone, they set 4% as the seven-day rolling average. So there will be more to come on that. Under orange and red, we are required to shift to fully remote instruction, but there was some areas of the state, mostly downstate New York City, that were early on, in early October, designated as red and orange zones, and they felt like they weren't able to get their kids back in school. So on November 3rd, we received guidance for how you could test out of a red and orange zone and allow in-person attendance to start or continue. That's quite a task. So as you may have seen from my email this afternoon, if we are in a red or orange zone, I don't think we're going to have the capacity to do the testing. But I can go a little bit more into detail here on that. So in red or orange, schools can reopen if you test all in-person students and staff with only the negative tests being allowed to attend in person, and the tests have to be conducted within seven days of the reopening. So originally, the first set of guidance said we would close for two weeks automatically in red or orange. The second set of guidance issued said that we'd be able to open on the fifth day of closure as long as we test all the in-person students and staff and then only allow the negative tests to resume in-person attendance. Those that refuse to test or are testing positive would have to remain remote. So that is quite a task for us at our elementary schools, staffing-wise. Certainly, we have flexibility at the middle and high school to allow people to flexibly go between remote and hybrid. But at the elementary school, if someone refused to test or tested positive, to automatically flip over to a fully remote model is basically a change of a teacher, and it would be almost impossible for us to accomplish. So once you get over that first hurdle, and as you know, for us, that would be probably 3,500 or more tests that we would have to conduct. If we got over that first hurdle, we would then have to randomly test 25% of our in-person students and staff with a unique group every week until we got through four weeks, and then upon the fifth week, we'd have to go back and retest Group 1. So that is much more stringent than the yellow zone, where we can pick 20%, and we can seek consent and only test those that are willing. This, we have to have everybody in our testing pool, and we have to go to a unique group each week. At least that's the way it's written now. But once more orange zones are designated, you may get updated guidance. That seems to have been the pattern. If the 20% random sampling achieves a positivity rate of 3% or higher, then you're forced to go back to fully remote. So I spent just a little bit of time on this slide because I acquired all this useless information that I feel like I wanted to come in handy. But also, I spent a lot of time on this slide because the reality of us reopening in orange or red is not realistic. So unfortunately, if we are in orange or red, that would result in a fully remote situation for us until we're either down to yellow or the designation's removed entirely.
Is that because we don't have enough people opting in to take the test? Or is it just impossible with staff?
Yeah, I don't think we have the capacity to do the testing.
We didn't have many tests.
Yeah. And then we also don't have the capacity to just flip people to fully remote that decide that they don't want to test at the elementary schools or that test positive.
Do we even be able to get all these tests?
Well, I think they said the state would provide them. And we requested 3,000 that we're told will be here tomorrow. So I think we would be able to get them. The question would be, how long would it take to test 3,000 people? And would it be within a seven-day period? Because they want tests to be within seven days of opening. It can't be an old test. So people could provide their own, or we can do it for them, but they want it to be no more than seven days old. So I don't know that we have the capacity, even in a five-day work week, to test 3,000 people. That would be quite an undertaking for a school system, let alone a hospital. So we did receive guidance Saturday night. So this is for the yellow zone. So originally, when it was written, you had to test 20% a week in order to remain open. Over the weekend, we received guidance that said you have two weeks to test 20% of your population. And if your positivity rate in that two weeks, 20%, is below the yellow zone's seven-day rolling average, then you don't have to continue testing any longer. If your positivity rate in a yellow zone is above the seven-day rolling average of the region, then you have to continue testing every other week. You have to be 20%. So what they relaxed was, it used to be 20% in one week, now it's 20% in two weeks. And in the first set of testing, if your positivity rate is below that of the greater yellow zone, they say that is sufficient demonstration that in-person instruction is not a driver of the local viral spread. In other words, schools aren't harboring transmission in the region. So at that point, you would be free and clear of the testing requirement, unless, of course, you went to orange or red. But as long as you're in the yellow zone, you'd be free and clear of that. So we got that guidance on Saturday. It was effective this week. But our yellow zone designation came on Monday, November 9th. So there is some question as to whether or not, as of this Friday, that ends our two-week period to get the 20% of testing in. We consulted with our attorneys, and Mike, conference call with them, and their opinion was what, Mike?
Their opinion was to stay the course. As long as you're doing your due diligence, working towards the goal and working towards what the recommendations are, given the almost impossible terms that are in front of you, they said you would be fine to continue. Because essentially then, if you were to stop and then say, well, reopen and start testing, there's really no difference in what we're doing because we're literally reached the end and we're going to start testing the next day, essentially reopening. We're just not closing because there's no gap.
Yeah, so we have been proactively working on a testing plan. There was a couple of big hurdles to get over. Initially, when we got the guidance on October 9th about the yellow zone, as a group of superintendents, we met with the Erie County Department of Health, and they said to us, if any part of Erie County fell into a yellow zone, that they would do the testing for us. And they just asked us to secure a location. So at that point, I started working with officials in the town to find a location. And we successfully secured a drive-through location. We're the Autobahn Golf Course. And we felt like if any one of our schools, or even all four of them, fell into a yellow zone, we would have the Erie County Department of Health come and do the testing, and we would just have to coordinate our 20% to show up and be tested. Unfortunately, when the yellow zone designation hit, and it was so widespread throughout the county, the county realized that they didn't have the capacity to do testing for school districts. So the State Department of Health had encouraged the local Department of Health to use their LSL, which is a limited service lab designation, which allows you to do testing. They had asked the local Department of Health to order tests using their LSL designation for the school districts within their county. And then they had asked them to train nurses in the school to be able to conduct testing, again, under their limited service lab certification. Our county did not want to do that, and said that they weren't going to do that. So it did happen in some other counties. One of them I'm familiar with is Monroe. They did start testing this week in many of the Monroe County school districts because the county did order the tests under their LSL. And the county did train school staff to carry out the testing under their purview. For some reason, our county did not want to take that route, which left Erie County school districts on our own to pursue either a third-party vendor or our own limited service lab designation. So Mike worked very diligently on both of those fronts. And we were able to order tests from the state because we have an existing partnership with Avianna because they are providing a second nurse in each of our buildings as part of our reopening plan. And as a result, we were able to order tests using Avianna's limited service lab designation. And Avianna is training the nurses tomorrow to conduct testing in our schools, which, again, they're already in them every day anyway, as part of our reopening plan. We did apply for the limited service lab. Our medical director from HealthWorks would not sign off on it. He had some reservations about it. But we were fortunate enough to partner with a doctor from Excelsior, which we have an agreement with for our athletic training services, who was willing to sign off on the limited service lab as the doctor in charge to allow us to be designated as a lab. So Mike went out to the doctor's house on Saturday to get his signature and credentials. And we overnighted that on Monday to the New York State Department of Health. So we anticipate, because they're prioritizing schools right now, that our limited service lab designation or certification will be approved in a day or two. However, again, we didn't want to wait for that to happen. So our partnership with Avianna is what has allowed us to move forward. So we'll have both. So our testing timeline, and I added a couple of dates in here just prior to the meeting activities were printed, because I recall some of the guidance that we got. The original yellow zone guidance was October 9th. That's really when we started planning. And to be honest with you, we had a pretty significant plan when we thought the county was going to do the testing for us because it involved getting consent from parents, it involved identifying 20%. We had a two- or three-page action plan when we thought the county was going to do the testing for us, and we thought we were prepared at that time. And then we learned that they weren't going to have the capacity to do that. Obviously, it's been quite a whirlwind over the last few weeks to get prepared to do some testing to keep our schools open. So on November 9th, we had the yellow zone designation. November 12th was the guidance document that I referred to, where the State Department of Health directed the local health departments to order tests and train the school staff to do tests. Our local health department did not follow that guidance or is unable to. I'm not sure which one. And then on November 14th, we got guidance which updated the 20% from one week to 20% over two weeks, and the ability to test out of the testing requirement. November 16th for us was the deadline for folks to consent. We've had about two-thirds of the districts fill out the consent forms. So I think there's a desire from our community to keep kids in person. We're still tracking down some folks that haven't filled it out yet at this point.
Is it too late?
No. I sent a reminder in my email today, and then I have the ability just to reach out to the individuals that haven't done it directly, which I'll do again tomorrow. And then November 23rd, as you may have seen from my notice this afternoon, is when we plan to start our testing. We're going to target next week the middle school and high school with the hope that we can get 20% of the middle and high school students and staff done in the short week before the holiday, and then focus when we return, if we're still in the yellow zone, on the elementary schools the following week. So we are starting our two-week period next week in hopes that the state will recognize that their guidance was issued a week into our yellow zone designation, and we need some time to order tests and get the materials from the state and get people trained. So that's our timeline. As you know, we've sent regular communication within the community. On Friday, June 6th, I emailed everybody. I'm sure you all committed it to memory, a lengthy email about what this whole initiative was and what the metrics were for going in and out of these zones. Luckily, that was out prior to Monday's announcement, when we were designated as a yellow zone. On the 9th, I did send a follow-up email saying we've been identified as a yellow zone, but our schools will stay open in our hybrid model until further notice. And then on the 12th, I issued an email, once I knew all the hard work Mike was doing to get us prepared for testing. And then today was the update to notify when testing will begin, which is Monday. We're still working out some of the logistics of the testing. As you can imagine, 20% in each of our buildings is about 120 to 140 tests. So a little over 500 for the districts. But it is a building-based initiative, so we have to hit 20% in each building, not just district-wide. But we are prepared, and we're working out just how things will flow. When the kids come down, they get the swab, the results. The tests are 15 minutes. Our plan is to try to get as many in per hour as we can with the five nurses that we have available from Avianna doing the testing. Unfortunately, it will leave our buildings a little short-staffed compared to what we had at the beginning of the reopening plan for our care room and our well room. But we feel like our RNs, the district employees, will still be in their offices and be able to manage their workload. So the yellow zone testing plan overview. We've identified from those that have consented the 20% in each building. So it's about 500 people, give or take. We have a system in the parent-pollary portal for consent, so I mentioned that. We've partnered with Avianna Healthcare in order to get going with this for not only staffing but ordering the tests. We also will have our limited service lab designation, hopefully, within a day or two. They're using the Binax Now AG card, so it's not the very usual swab that you may have seen on TV or had if you had to test yourself. They say it's less than an inch deep in each nostril. I sent out a video in two of my communications that showed the surgeon general performing tests on himself. So it's a pretty minimally invasive swab, which I know is a concern for some people. And it is a rapid test with results being delivered in 15 minutes. And once we have our limited service lab designation, we expect that our RNs will participate in some of the testing. We're thinking primarily on Wednesdays because that's the day when our kids, as you know, are fully remote. And we know we're going to have some parents that may want to accompany their kids, especially at our younger grades. So we expect that on Wednesday, our RNs, in addition to the Avianna staff, will be available to administer tests for people that want that option as opposed to it being done during the school day. So we have testing sites at each building. We're still working out the details of the schedule. Originally, you're doing half-days in a morning and an afternoon in the different buildings throughout the four days. Next week will be a unique situation because it's a short week. So we're going to focus on high school and middle school solely on Monday and Tuesday. And then we plan to open up Wednesday for any staff, 12-month staff that is working from the high school or middle school to get tested, as well as any middle school or high school parents that would prefer to bring their kids on Wednesday as opposed to having it done during school. The Wednesdays will be here at Windermere in a central location. We do plan to have our staff onsite during the testing. So clerical, we have some aid assistants, Mike, myself, some additional people that will be on staff. So there's another phase for the kids when they come down. Possibly a member of our PPS staff, a social worker, a psychologist, a counselor, just to be there so the kids feel comfortable. And one of the big requirements, two of the big requirements are the reporting. So we have to report to the electronic clinical lab reporting system, or ECLRS. So that's a statewide lab reporting system. So we're still working on getting access to that and getting that up and running. There's a spreadsheet that we're required to upload that has 90 columns in it with information about our testing site, our school address, the names of the people being tested, the results, all of those things. It's the same system where they enter data if you were to go to your doctor or a hospital and get a test. So we also have to report it to the New York State COVID-19 reporting system. Every week, they have, if you're in a yellow zone, the number of tests that you've done and the results that they would like. We do plan to provide the results to parents on the day of testing. In order for it to be an efficient process, we're not going to have the kids wait for the results. But if somebody does test positive, we plan to bring that child to our isolation room and call the parents to pick them up. But otherwise, we plan to deliver the results to the parents after the fact via email. And then we will also have a paper copy of the results that will be sent to the parents as well for their records. Process will maintain strict confidentiality. We are required to follow the contact tracing process. So if someone tests positive, like we always do, we will have to notify the Department of Health and identify close contacts that may need to be quarantined. We are documenting all this in an official document, but it's still, as you can imagine, a work in progress. So that's really an overview of the microcluster action initiative and our testing plan. Does anybody have any questions, comments, clarification?
Has anyone talked about the accuracy of the tests?
Yes. Specifically...
I was told that someone was telling me that symptomatic is 90% accurate and asymptomatic is 17% accurate.
I heard the same thing, but 40% for asymptomatic from Dr. Burstein.
So potentially, we could end up with negatives or false positives.
Yeah, and I asked if they were more inaccurate on the positive side or the negative side, and they didn't say. It's not more likely to identify a false positive or a negative. I can tell you, I had a friend of mine who's in a Monroe County district that conducted over 100 tests yesterday and today. And out of the over 100 tests, they had one positive. Yeah, but that is one of the questions about the specific test that's being used because it's an antigen test as opposed to a molecular test. And that's what I learned about why the nasal swab is so deep on the PCR test is because the sample that they take from deep in the passageway there, the NP passageway, is more accurate than a more shallow swab.
Anyone else?
Do you get a sense of other school districts are trying to do this? I can't imagine very many are going to be doing this.
Yeah, I think some local ones are trying, and some are making, from what I hear, just informally in our meetings, some are making more progress than others. I think in our area, there's a commitment. I would say our neighbors in the town of Amherst are probably in good shape and would be poised, based on what I've heard. But it's been quite a roller coaster, and we've met several times, and a lot happens in between our weekly meetings. So I think most people are committed to staying open for in-person. So I think most people are committed to staying open for in-person. You know, and as I mentioned before, we were fortunate to have the existing partnership with Aviana, where we already had the nurses contracted in our schools, which moves things forward for us significantly. Because otherwise, we'd have to wait for the LSL to get approved, then we could order our tests, and that would take probably a week. Mike, you ordered our tests last week Tuesday, right?
Yeah, luckily we have a friendly health head, New York State Department of Health, doing very good. I'd say at least she's got my number on text now, so I talked to her, and she had me check to see the order. They were ordered and sent last week.
Yeah, so we ordered them on Tuesday last week. We received confirmation on Friday that the order was processed, and this week we were told that they should be here by the end of business tomorrow. So it is a little bit over a week. There was a holiday in there, so let's say it's a week to get the tests from when you order them, but if we had to wait for the limited-service lab certification, it would have pushed things back, because we don't expect that to go through until, you know, tomorrow or even the next day. I will tell you, the New York State Department of Health is very helpful and very responsive. You know, and it has been a pleasure working with them, because they are quite helpful in trying to get this up and running in our schools. We've actually talked to them, I think, more so than our local Department of Health throughout this testing planning.
Do you have a sense of why our medical director didn't want to sign off on our assignment?
Mike talked to him more than I did, but my sense was that he wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be a liability for his business, which, you know, was, I think, his primary concern. Mike, do you have something else?
Yeah, essentially, it's their attorneys and their business or HR office was concerned about liability with the doctor overseeing testing in a site where people would be present. I've not heard that concern from others, but it's not my area of expertise, so... but luckily it's telling me about our physician, who Excelsior was one of the ones to do it. And it's helping a lot, because it's great.
Is your protocol for the disposal of the same parents?
Yeah, it's the same as like, you know, a biohazard plant. So we have to order the biohazards bags, and they'll be disposed safely, and then in the biohazard, we did.
Ozures the same way?
Yes, yeah. The card is actually pretty interesting. If you... I sent a couple of videos in my communications. One was the administration of it. There was another one that I think is actually the training modules that they use on the ADDID Labs website. But, you know, the best analogy is that of a pregnancy test. You know, there's a strip inside the card, full of the antibodies, and, you know, once you put the sample in and close the card, if two lines show up, it's a positive. If one line is there, it's a negative. So I've heard it's so easy, even a superintendent can do it.
And they have to.
And Mike, hey, they might have to. Don't put that in the air. Any other questions? I'm sure there's more to come. Every time there's more designations or more zones, we seem to get an updated guidance. So I hope tomorrow doesn't bring the news that many are anticipating about orange or red locally, but if it does, we're prepared, I think, to do testing when we go back to yellow and get our kids back into school.
I know the people that I've bumped into, talked to, whatever, are really appreciative of the patient you're dealing with, and, you know, constant contact, so thank you.
You're getting good cards on Facebook.
Oh, right.
I don't know, but you love that.
Well, important public opinion is the most important one. So it's really Mike's doing. He's been heading the initiative and working tirelessly. I think you may have heard me say, he drove out to a doctor's house on Saturday to get his signature so we could put paperwork in. He's been working day and night on it, and gracious of taking my calls and kind of talking night about it, but it's quite the undertaking. You know, just administering the tests alone is a big undertaking, but the reporting piece that has to take place on the backend of it is also a significant undertaking. So definitely spending all of our time on it right now. Thank you.
I'm sure you can imagine you'd be doing any of those.
Well, I feel like we could open a hospital over here if we need to do something.
All right. I will need a motion for new business items.
How many have you seen for new business items? E1, A through F, 2, A through D, 3, B through E, G, and H.
Say the second.
Say the second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items? E1, A through F, 2, A through D, 3, B through E, and G and H, please say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Bezinski, I don't believe we have follow-up acts and items, and we have no executive session tonight. So we will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Say the second. Mr. Viva, all in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Patrick, for coming.